Ask for motion to enter, uh... To adjourn executive session?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, uh... Executive session is closed. A number of issues were taken up, mostly legal advice regarding, um... NEA Council 94 contracts and other matters. A vote was taken on grievance filed by NEA Tiverton. The grievances were both denied. Now returning to open session. Do you guys want to recess for five minutes?
No, recess. Five minutes.
Sorry, I know. These guys have been sitting here. Sorry. All right. I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All of them in favor? Dr. Sanquini?
Do you want to do the minutes or fight personnel?
Uh... Just personnel actions.
Okay, so on the resignations, we have new teacher at the middle school, William Haste. We have a teacher resignation at Fort Barton, Sarah Adonia. And another resignation at Fort Barton, Cheryl Griffith. Under appointments, we have library media aide for all the elementary schools, Elizabeth Souza. We have a part-time lunch recess aide at Fort Barton, Cheryl Griffin. And that is the personnel action.
Okay. Anything under correspondence?
You have two documents. You have the January enrollment, which I provide you on a monthly basis, little change in the district. And you also have a document outlining what you voted a previous school committee meeting regarding the organization of the committee.
Oh, of the subcommittees and such?
Subcommittees and everything else, yep.
Number nine, old business construction update. You want to take that one?
Uh... I think Mr. Mendy's prepared us a report for that.
Oh, Mr. Mendy's is there.
So I'm gonna take his sunshine and...
Sorry.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
We had a meeting today, an instruction meeting, the ceiling tiles, paint finishes, the electrical lighting, uh... And both, these are for both buildings. They're storm movers that have to be put in here. The heat, on the baseboard heat, uh... The controls are all supposed to be taken care of this Saturday. The insulation around the heating pipes, the balancing, uh... The commissionings are supposed to be between the 19th and the 31st of this month. We're supposed to be training custodians and all, because teach... The school department personnel is going to be taught on the 21st. That's the tentative date right now of this month. And the OMEs should be given to us by the end of the month.
Yay, Mike!
Sorry, OME?
Uh... The operating manuals.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Uh... No, I've...
No, okay.
Not for me. Sorry. I'm... I know. It's a little... It is a little late. Okay. Um... New business, FY '20 budget presentation?
Okay.
Ten A?
Can I say your pad?
Just waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I say your pad?
Oh, yeah. Of course. So we're gonna bring it up on the big screen for you here. And this presentation you're gonna see this evening, um... I would call it less a budget and more of an educational plan to move the district forward. And so the four principals are sitting in front of you, two people to my left. I pushed them to recognize what's in the best interest of the students or the departments they lead as far as moving us forward. I don't expect this is the budget you're going to move forward with, but I think it's very important to educate the community, the school committee, and anyone who's associated with the public school system about what the true needs are of this district if we really want to get to moving forward with student achievement. And so that's what I present to you here this evening, is a first look at an educational plan to go forward. So we started out, and as anything we try to do, we try to set some goals. And we recognize with the budget, there are certain goals that are handed to us, and there's certain goals that we want to develop. So as a go-to's with you, and as in any budget, we always have to meet our mandated and fixed cost. We have to main... In this budget here, we want to maintain all the professional staff positions we have. Student enrollment certainly will justify the need to keep our current staff, but also to add some select positions to improve student achievement. And we'll outline those positions for you. Another goal that's handed to us is certainly we have to meet all the mandated costs associated with special education. You know, that's a federal mandate. Those costs come to us. It's like paying your mortgage first. That's a bill that has to be paid. We put in appropriated calculated increases in energy, maintenance, and transportation. Again, it's things that we have to do. But we also took a close look at curriculum and technology and built in some gains there that we feel will really serve our students well. And all those goals get to that last item there, that we want to educate 1,800 students to the greatest extent possible every day for 180 days. That's our goal, and that's we can move the district forward. That line and red there, that comes from the Rhode Island School Committee Responsibility Book. That is your number-one responsibility. Recognize that the first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools. And I commend all five of you, because I feel you do that as exceptionally... Do that exceptionally well. So it's just some background data here. Here's just a quick look at enrollment. I wish the scale was better, because it looks like a terrible drop-off there. I know, and I played with this over and over, and I couldn't get it to adjust. But it's not that significant. The district has had some fluctuations in enrollment. You see an all-time high, and at least for the years I'm showing you, in 2016. It drops off a little bit, but you'll see where we are now in the red bar, and you see what I'm predicting for next year based upon some stuff. The district's pretty much gonna be stable right there, which again, which why I say to you that all the staff we currently employ, we need to reemploy. We need to bring everyone back to these positions. Some other background data. Here's per pupil expenditure. I know the towns are up there. I just sort of randomly chose that. Some are our neighbors, some are communities that I was led to believe are somewhat like Tiverton. Anyways, this is simply the show. You know, this... Tiverton supports education. I don't think that by any means this chart suggests we overspend for education. It doesn't suggest that we underspend. You know, it's right there. There's some communities that spend a little less, there's some communities that spend a little more. We're right about at the state average. And this one here, we're looking at residential tax rate. Now, there's a lot of factors that go into tax rate, right? We can look at every community on this list. What's their base rate for industry and things like that? A lot of things affect revenue. But, you know, apples to apples, what's the residential tax rate? You see that, again, Tiverton supports its town pretty well. I mean, the tax rate is set in a sense that it doesn't suggest to anyone that there's an overpayment in taxes, doesn't suggest that there's an underpayment. There's certainly communities that pay a lot more, there's some communities that pay a little bit less. It's just baseline background knowledge here. Now I want to get into the budget we're gonna speak to you this evening. The budget we have in front of you is a 32.5... I'll use round numbers here, .5, .6 million-dollar budget. And if I was to take that $32 million and break it down into multiple categories, you can see what this chart does for you here. But the key thing is the blue piece and the orange piece, that's 80% of the budget. That's personnel. That's all our people and their benefits. 80% of this budget is based upon people. And that's a strong testament to how this district has been moving forward. That's where the money should be. We're a people-oriented business. People make the difference for us, and that's where the money should be spent. Now, those other slices there, I recognize there's some interesting terminology up there. It doesn't really explain what it is. I'm gonna ask Ms. Farr to kind of give you what's in those categories. She's using codes that are from a chart that we have to link these accounts to, but yet there's things behind it. So Lisa?
All right. So this is based off of UCOA for Rhode Island as to how we have our categories. So purchased professional and technical services is at 3.96% of the budget. The main drivers there are bus monitors, special education costs for assistance, and personal care, other technical services like IT software licenses and legal services. The next one is purchased property services. That's at .9%. The main drivers there are maintenance and repairs, rental equipment like the copiers. Then we have other purchase services at 10... 10.43%. Main drivers being our transportation, so our bus services, and our special education tuition costs. Then we have supplies at 3.27%. The main drivers are general supplies and materials, fuel oil being our heating, and electricity. Then we have property at 1.36%, and that's technology, equipment, and hardware. And then we have other fees and dues at .1%, and that's professional organization fees. And that's for like the principals, superintendent, other administrators.
So before I move to the next shot, again, I'll call your attention to the blue and the orange there and say to you, there's 80% of our budget. So if you take that 80%, that's how it gets divided. So the 80% of the budget is divided. 63% of it is for teachers. The next largest group is paraprofessionals at 19.5%. Then you move through the rest of the categories there. Our custodians at 5%. Our administration at 3.63%, administrative assistants at 5%, nurses at 1.1. You see the other small categories. So again, this budget is saying to you, we spend a lot of money on people, 80%. 63% is on teachers. It's where it should be. Working with students, paraprofessionals, the next highest, people who are working with students. It's a budget that's really strong on providing services to students, which is the way you want to have it developed. So sort of an executive summary now of the numbers I'm showing you. The current budget for the schools this year is 30, and again, I'll use round numbers, is 30.2 million. Everything I'm speaking to you about this evening adds up to 2.3 million, which is a 7% increase. I know that number looks exceedingly high. I'm not saying this is gonna be our budget. It's important for you to understand this is a budget based upon the needs of the student in this district. So a request or a number we're looking at now is like 32.5. Now, if I break that down, this parallels the book that we provided you. The book is divided into two main categories, salary and expenses. Salary, again, being 80% of the budget. So we look up here, we see that right now, this year, we're spending 16.2 million on salary. What are the drivers that are impacting salary? Well, the first three bullets there are mandated and fixed. Okay? Cost of steps, which is in the contract, cost of lane changes in the contract, the raises we've already negotiated in the contract. The next thing that's driving that is the addition of 9.8 staff members. Momentarily, I'll show you the list of staff members we'd like to add. Our four principals are here this evening to answer any questions about any positions that pertain to their buildings. So that drives that budget up to 17, almost 18 million. It's a 10.6% increase. Again, I'm gonna reiterate that the first three bullets on that list are fixed and mandated. So again, this quickly just takes our FTEs, where we are, and moves it up one...
Peter, can you go back to that last slide for a second? So salary budget for FY 2019, which is our current budget year, is 16.2 million? I thought it was closer to 18 million. Am I wrong there?
Outside of benefits, probably?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe that's it?
Right.
Still, that doesn't sound like enough for benefits, then.
No, I think this is devoid of benefits. Not "I think."
Yeah.
It's without benefits.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, you know what it is?
What?
The 16.2... This is, we had this discussion earlier. The 16.2 billion does not include the SEDG class from...
Uh...
The way that... That we presented the budgets in the past was we had that salary line down in special education, and you will see it on that three pages down. And I had talked to Peter about that today, about moving it so that we're doing apples to apples. So we'll have to... We'll have to look at that again, because according to my math, the budget with that is about 16.7-ish, maybe higher.
I... Okay. I just still have carried an 18 million amount of annual payroll in my head.
So what this should add up to is...
Right.
If you look at those pages in your budget under expenses, you're gonna see everyone who works in the district and their salary, predicted salary for next year, whether it's already contractually mandated or can be contractually mandated. That's what this is. This is the number we're showing you here, too. To Ms. Palace's point, right, a number of our SEDG people come off the regional assessment that shows up in our expenses. We certainly can move it over to this category here, because it is personnel.
Right, just so that FY '17 actual, FY '18 actual, and '20 actual are all sort of capturing the same costs in the same spots.
Sure. We can do that.
Okay.
Because I think to Jerry's point, that increase isn't as large as it looks... As it looks. It's more like probably 6%.
9.8 FTEs. So you have a section in your budget book that outlines, it's called new requests. So each one of these positions is provided to you with a strong rationale. This is just simply the list of the positions. You see that there's more than 9.8 positions up there, because the .2s add up. They're listed as a position, but yet it's .2. So again, I won't go through each and every one of these with you, because there is a strong rationale provided to you in your booklet there. But I just draw your attention to that the positions being requested here are based upon a lot of the social, emotional work that we need to do with our students. It's certainly a challenge in our district right now. So you see the behavior specialists at two different places, the aides are around that, the reading will math certainly addresses that in different ways. The dean of students at the high school addresses that. The other .2s are certainly getting at courses at the high school or needed areas here. The maintenance tech is for the middle school. The middle school... Custodians for the middle school severely understaffed by square footage and the amount of custodians that are there. The network administrator, Mr. Cannavale, can speak to you about that. There's a number of coaching stipends we put in based upon analysis for athletics and the number of coaches we have and the number of students who are participating. So again, you have some detail there, and the principals are here to answer any questions about any of these positions. And so the... I apologize, this is jumping. So if we take... That was the 80% of the budget. Now, the 20% of the budget are our expenses. So again, we're operating off 13... Again, I'll use round numbers, 13 million. We're looking to move this up to 13.4. The difference is about 400,000. It's a 3% increase. That 400,000, what's driving that? Well, there's three main drivers. Technology, which is the largest one. Again, Mr. Cannavale is here to express to you or explain to you what that derives. Our athletics, which is woefully underfunded and certainly needs a lot of support. And the transportation, I'll call your attention to that. That's a fixed cost. That's our bus contracts. That's what's going up next year to the tune of almost $100,000.
And that's contractual?
That is contractual. Another section in your budget book, not part of the operating budget, but we've combined, and again, the principals and others who work in the district have looked at, Mr. Mendy's, I'll give a lot of credit to, we've gone through all of our buildings and all of our needs, and combined the RIDE articles that have been approved there with other needs in the building, and provided you a five-year look capital plan. And if you look at year one in your book, you're gonna see a lot of items mentioned. I've called out these five, because I'm saying to you, we need to do these five. There's no intercom system at the high school, which presents a huge security risk. When I say the intercom system and all the common areas like the cafeteria, the auditorium, places of that nature. The front doors at the high school, you come in and out of them all the time. You know that they need to be replaced. A small amount of money, but our tennis courts, if we don't address this now, we're gonna lose our tennis courts. Those of you who've served on the building committee recognize we're about to commission these two buildings. We have three elementary schools who have very complex heating systems. This is a maintenance contract to maintain all five heating systems at our five schools to high levels. And we've had a lot of issues. We call in companies to do this repair work. We get charged exorbitant amounts. This seems to be a very prudent way to go about this. The building committee is examining this, and I believe will recommend that this is something that the district should do. It's a cost savings. It's one of those pay me now, pay me later kind of things, and this certainly is proactive way to deal with it. And then probably the most important thing on this list is, for two years now, this district has been looking to adopt a K-8 literacy program. And through K through 8, there's really no consistent way that we teach kids how to read. We have the Common Core standard that guides our teachers. We have great principals who observe and analyze what teachers are doing. I would say what students learn is consistent, but how it's done is not consistent. That's because we don't provide our teachers with the same materials and the same program. There's no literacy program. And so again, I pray praise here to Ms. Wardell and Ms. Craven, who have been working diligently this year analyzing, working with the RIDE department through a program they were asked to become part of, analyzing the curriculums that are out there. And by this spring, they'll be able to make a recommendation on a program that we feel would best address the needs of the Tiverton public schools. It's critical to implement that if we really want to make some gains in the literacy and the writing, the reading, the speaking skills of all of our students.
So Peter, the... The first three would be one-time capital. The fourth and fifth would not be. Am I right in that?
The fifth would be. That would be a one-time adoption.
Okay.
The fourth would be a... What I'm showing you is the cost of a one-year contract.
That was a one-year contract. That's gonna... That would be recurring.
Reoccurring expense. Great point.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Just some more background information for you. You know these numbers better than I do. So, you know, here's the operating budget of the Tiverton public schools over the last five fiscal years. And you see the slight gains that have been given every year. And then parallel to that is the fund balance. So you've seen how the fund balance has grown, and now you're seeing how the fund balance has been depleted. And so the key... I think the key point to make here, as we create the FY '20 budget, that fund balance isn't as strong as it has been in the past to support the needs of the district. It certainly speaks to the need for the operating budget to be moved forward, to be adjusted.
So two points I'd make about that slide. One is that those... The .6 and the .9% in FY '17 and '18, that was all derived as an increase from additional state aid. The local level, you were 0% increase. The other thing I would sort of just always say in this slide is that the fund balance has gone tonight to roughly $1 million because of all the work that's gone on in the middle school and high school. That was what that fund was for, was to do the capital improvements that we needed.
And we have a detailed report to show you why the amount has gone from 4 million to basically 1 million now, how that money's been spent.
Yeah.
So we can show that to you.
And other things.
To that point, we need to have a discussion with the budget committee about...
Right.
Whether we're going to continue funding our capital improvements through our fund balance.
Right.
Because if we are, we can't be given a hard time, because it goes up. I mean, you're either gonna ask us to take control of our capital spending and budget for that and increase our fund balance because of it, or the budget committee, or not the budget committee, the town side...
We'll have to base...
Is gonna start budgeting for capital like they used to.
Right.
But it's gotta be one way or the other, and we have to have that discussion.
And we should never miss an opportunity to say that because we did the plan, you know, 40, 30, 30 to 40 percent of that's coming back to the town, not to the... It's the only way you can actually reallocate funds, you know, in a way, back to the town, is that we build up the capital, then you can... Then it comes back to the town in the form of the reimbursement from RIDE. And then a related question that I think we should be sure to bring up in the future discussions with the budget committee and the council and the community as a whole is, what is the proper level for the fund balance? And I... You know, that represents, right now anyway, about 3%, a little less, which seems a good number to have on hand.
Right. That's why it's a two-point...
But...
It's a two-part discussion.
Yeah.
Do you want us to fund our own capital?
Right.
Because if you want us to do that, we also need money for contingencies.
Right.
You know, one out of district student is 400, $500,000.
Right.
So it's a two-part discussion. Maybe that 9.98 is fine, just for contingencies.
Right.
But if we're talking about funding our own capital, that's not high enough. So it really is a discussion the town needs to have.
You had me at a million.
Right.
Elisa, will you be providing us the detailed...
Yeah. So, you know, you hired me to be your educational leader in this district, and that's what I do. And I have great confidence in the principals who sit in front of me and in the staff that works at this school. You saw the presentation on SAT scores. You saw the presentation on our ICAST scores and all that. But this is the one that I think everyone in this community needs to be... Pay particular attention to. 20 students didn't graduate in '17. 15 students didn't graduate in '18. I don't know what the number's gonna be this year. The number has to be 100% in 2020. And I'm telling you, that can be achieved.
It can.
That absolutely can be achieved. I know it can be achieved. But you have, and this is gonna be my key point here, the investment becomes before the return in results. There has to be an investment in this school system so that we have the curriculum materials, the technology, and the right staffing to achieve 100% graduation. That's our goal. Every kid graduating in May of that's their senior year needs to have choices. And I'm telling you, if we work together and we can achieve a budget that supports education in this community, that 100% will be achieved. So I've shown you a 7% budget, and I recognize that it's exceedingly high. A 4% budget, this is what 4% brings you in at. 9.8 staff members no longer exist. The money we've allocated to technology and the athletic budget no longer exists. It basically covers all the fixed and mandated costs. Some additions for curriculum, a little for technology, but basically moving forward with what we're doing this year, moving it all forward ahead to next year. That's 4%. And if you level fund this budget, we strip every expense account to bare bones, and the reality is, we will not bring back the same staff we have this year, next year. And you only have $1 million in that fund balance, and I know you don't want to use it for reoccurring costs. So, you know, as you deliberate, the number that due to the, I believe, the budget committee on the 15th of January, and I know that we'll speak again, you know, you've got three looks. You've got a 7% look that moves this district ahead mightily. You've got a 4% that maintains where we are, and you've got a, excuse me, a level-funded budget, or, I mean, when I say level-funded, the amount we have this year, moving that ahead, you know, that 1% gain that you've seen year after year, 0.6%, that's what's gonna happen here. So, you know, a lot to discuss in the next couple of weeks, but I'll pause there and take your questions.
The one I do have, I think, first, of all of these reports and expenses, do we know what, if any, increase in state funding there will be? So I think that's key.
I think it's too early to say that.
772-747. Proposed aid, 7550-865. Last year's enacted aid, 6778-118. FY '20 proposed, and again, we have to understand that might get changed. Last year's enacted aid was 6778-118. So if we take that out of the 7%, we'd be at 5-ish, 5.1, around.
Say that again?
If you... His 7% increase, if you backed out the increase in state aid, it would be about 5.12, 5.2.
Yeah, if I go back to the executive summary.
After two years of zero.
Yes.[1649.04] Yes. I mean, that's, we have had two years of, I mean, it hasn't been zero. We've gotten the increase in aid, but we have gotten zero from the municipal side.
From the municipal side, I think, you know, although you cannot... In enacting the budget, you cannot bifurcate it. You have to keep in mind what each...
Well, yeah, which is that historical slide.
What the numbers represent, right.
So it would be that three two two three three six eight, plus a dollar, plus the increase in aid, which right now looks like seven hundred and seventy K-ish. But again, you know, who knows what the General Assembly could do? They could come back and, you know. That's always the risk when we, you know, do our budgets so early.
When will those numbers be locked down?
Oh geez, July.
May.
May, yeah, it'll be after our budget.
We get our number after the May revenue estimate.
Yeah, right?
Yep.
And it's almost always after the FTR.
Yes, it is.
I mean, in the case...
Last couple of years.
They have not, not given us the proposed aid in quite a while. I mean, it's...
Right. Some communities have been losers the last couple of years. We have not. And we are so, our, um, our percentage of support is, you know, sort of at the minimum. So I don't think they could get, with the current formula, I don't think they could get us down further from, I wouldn't expect any cut.
Well, and the Governor and the General Assembly have been pretty committed to this funding formula. I mean, they haven't wavered from it, so I wouldn't expect that they could.
Well, when the report came out, Dr. Locken? When the report came out, I was telling Dr. Santioli that, I was at a presentation, and they were saying that our state, what it gives to education, we're not in the top twenty. And I raised my hand, and I said, no, we're number forty-four. Okay, and I, I mean, I knew that, the guy knew I was gonna say it, 'cause I always have my charts, and I'm in forty-seventh in support to higher education, which is not right at all. I mean, so let's know that. No matter what numbers they give us and back and forth, we have the charts in front of us. The other chart I brought tonight, which I think is so important, is that because we're such a small community, and we need economies of scale, we've had to collaborate with other larger communities. And since two thousand and four, that's what we've been doing. Not only with healthcare, but oil, and whatever things, whatever we can go together. I've always said the Rhode Island Association of School Committees should get together with the League of Cities and Towns, and then we'd have an even bigger number to go forward with, instead of arguing with each other all the time. And I'd like to thank Dr. Santioli because it is our responsibility as a school district, school community, to tell the people what we need to go forward. We know what we need, he knows what we need, and if they keep giving us zero, and don't just look at the test scores, because you have to look beyond the numbers, we do so many amazing things here, that you can't test or measure the I-factors, and that's what we have to keep stressing to the community. They've been wonderful with us, with our capital needs, they've been so supportive, and with the library. And I testified that when they did the, all the schools, you know, they came around to see what we needed, and we got three ones and maybe two fours. And that was really good, 'cause some districts got all fives. That was devastating. So what the community has given us has put us way ahead of a lot of other places in the state. So we should be so proud to be Tivertonians and to be living here, and all come together and continue going forward. And now it's a matter of, we've invested in the three elementary schools, and then we did the high school, and we did the fields, and the science lab, and the guidance wing. And now this year, we've decided to invest in our staff, the people with the pulse. It's not the bricks and the mortar. It's the people with the pulse that make things happen. So now we're turning to them, we're investing in them, and hoping all to go forward together in our beautiful new buildings and whatever else we need. It's a very exciting time, and I hope we're not gonna fight about, you know, this and that. Zero, zero, zero. Thank you.
Peter, can you just go back to the enrollment? So I know, I know, yeah, those do look...
The scale's not good.
You need better scale. But anyway, so despite the fact that the national trend over the probably last four or five years has been down, ours is pretty up and down, and I know that's because of the building that's been going on, and Sandy Woods and et cetera. So you're basically saying you're not comfortable that it's going way up, but you're also not comfortable that it's going down.
Predicting for next year?
Yeah.
I think we're gonna be right around the same population. I mean, we're, yeah.
And don't forget the other...
When I look at the graduating, no, you look at the graduating senior class, you look at the potential K enrollment, it's almost identical.
Oh, all right.
And the other thing, the other study they did was how, we all know Rhode Island's losing population, so they did that study. And we were one of the only seven towns in the whole state that grew, Tiverton grew.
So from a planning board perspective, there's nothing immediate for next year that we know of?
Oh, I can get that. I can get that chart we used to get with their, I can get that. Yeah, I used to get that from Kate Meesho. That was very instructive to us.
I mean, you're probably right. I'm more concerned that it's gonna be higher.
Yeah.
I mean, that's probably conservative. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I can get that, and we'll pass it out, and then we'll see what developments are in the bucket.
And then I just, so, Peter and Elisa, just so we're all on the same page. So the lines I'm talking about is on that really detailed three-page thing even that Elisa just handed out. If you look at five one one oh regular salaries, FY nineteen budget, and if you flip the page and look at five five six forty, see how that doesn't line up with?
No.
That's where I'm saying we need to just restate nineteen. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
'Cause that'll change your slides, too.
And Dr. Locken?
Yes, Mrs. Locken.
Last night, Mr. Jeffrey Karen asked about the money following the child. And one of the things we know, we always know special ed, but then out-of-district placement, but then there's also tuition for other students to go to, like Newport, to P-Tech, to the Met School. And now there's new programs opening in Portsmouth, different places, and we're over, we're at over three hundred thousand for this year. Now, we used to send kids down to Rogers. They would go part-time, and then they'd come back, 'cause they wanted to be Tiverton students and play sports there and everything, or be in the band. But now with some of their programs, they won't let you do that anymore, so it's like seventeen thousand dollars. And we have programs here that we can tuition into, and the carpentry and the project lead the way if we keep them strong. And so I think we gotta, we gotta keep looking at that, and we get the, also the extra money for them, and so all those little things count. But I just wanna keep Tiverton a strong place to come to and not lose students wherever we can.
In that vein, I'd call your attention in the category of new requests. If you flip through a few pages of the personnel, there's a list of Tiverton High School new courses. I wanna give credit to Principal Ashley here. We've had some amazing conversations about that, how to get students to graduation, how to predict the future for our students and make sure they have experience in in areas that would really serve them well when they graduate high school. So you're looking at some really top courses here. We retain students and attract students to the districts. When you talk about drone technology and robotics, and a business course where students have to start their own business and take it from beginning to end, cybersecurity, and you can see the rest of the courses there. So we've thought long and hard about what we offer, what we could offer that would really benefit our students. So on top of what's already being offered here, these are things that we'd like to do.
So I don't see any specific request to add staff?
It's based upon existing staff, or you do see some requests at the high school for some point twos?
But those point twos are Portuguese only and PE, right? They're not gonna be...
Uh, there's a point two physics.
Under new requests?
Yeah, point two PE health, point two Portuguese.
Physics.
I don't see...
Yeah, physics.
So those comprise some of the things we have here, and it's also with the existing staff and how are we aligning the courses?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Good job.
I do want to, and no one will be shocked to hear me say this, I wanna chat about the stipends. I did have this discussion with you, Peter, earlier. My issue with stipends is not, I wanna pay them, but I wanna be equitable, and I wanna pay... I want us to know what stipends to cover everything, not just necessarily the ones that may have been requested. For instance, I don't see cyber patriots here. I don't see anything for the hockey team. I don't see anything from the middle school. Maybe we pay them all. So I guess my, my request would be to sort of go back, figure out who isn't getting a stipend. And, you know, maybe, maybe after-school clubs, you know, it's not coaching a twenty-two-member, you know, whatever, team, but, you know, they are doing something for the district, so maybe the stipend is a lot lower, but I still feel, you know, we should look at those. So I would just challenge you to go back and sort of figure out, I know, I know we pay a lot of them already, sort of figure out who's not getting a stipend, and add those in, even if it's just for informational purposes, so that we kind of know.
Well, you've already made the request of Mr. Ashley. I'm sure I'll have it on my desk tomorrow morning. I'll make the request right now, Ms. Craven. I'll give it to you till Friday.
Yeah, 'cause I've never been against paying them. I just wanna be equitable and making sure that we're recognizing anyone that is stepping forward to, yeah.
These additional courses, are these gonna require any additional capital outlays?
Nothing that's not either in this budget or coming through Perkins money or other grant money.
Any other questions or comments? It's both public.
Let me just flip back.
Okay. Item ten B, approval to accept Van Buren Charitable Foundation Grant?
Oh, oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
What? Oh, I thought...
So we have to give this to the Budget Committee on the fifteenth. We need to, we're not gonna have a meeting before then, so we need to decide what we're sending. Just this summary, which is fine, with the understanding that we haven't really begun to cut, discuss.
Yeah, it's just the first.
Yeah, I think this is our first draft.
This is the first draft, yeah.
You know, we are, we are in process. We are happy to...
I would just ask that you fix the FY nineteen... Like the reclass between the salaries and that, and the sped before, because, like I said, if they're rolling forward those salaries, that's a much lower percentage if you include that, you know, I just want that to be apples to apples. I'm happy to look at it before you send it, but I just wanna make sure that's fixed.
And, you know, certainly, I would call your attention to the budget calendar we've outlined for you. So the next time we meet, you're gonna have a detailed presentation on technology from Mr. Connavali, transportation from Ms. Farr, and the high school budget from Mr. Ashley. And then in February, Sarah Craig will be here to give you a complete overview of specializations. So you're gonna receive a lot more information on what I consider to be the major drivers of this budget. So if this...
So just make sure when you send this to them that they're, it's very clear that this is, like you said, this is a wish list, this is what we need. You understand it might not be the reality, and that we have not begun to dig into it.
We'll do. I'll write a, a nice cover letter on top of it.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Okay.
Now you're good?
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on what was going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Item ten B, approval to accept Van Buren Charitable Foundation Grant.
So in your, and under ten B, you're gonna see a rather generous grant from the Van Buren Charitable Foundation. This is a grant written by Miss Amy Donnelly Roach. The grant, this year's twenty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. It's to support SCL and technological programs in the district, so I recommend you accept this grant with gratitude.
Do I make that motion? Second?
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And tell Mrs. Donnelly Roach thank you for her efforts as well. Item ten C, request for...
From afar.
I saw her today. Request for a hundred and eighty-day calendar waiver.
As you may recall, that on the first day of school on September fourth, we had to cancel due to construction issues here. And again, that was at the middle school and the high school. And again, on October twenty-fourth, we canceled the day of school regarding the lack of heat here at the high school. We requested a waiver through the commission, and I've received a memo back from him saying that he would grant a waiver for one day. So I'd like to recommend to the committee that we waive September fourth for the middle school and high school, and that we add an additional day at the end of the year for just the high school to make up the date on October twenty-fourth.
So they waived one day? Okay.
Okay, make that motion?
Second?
Any discussion? I'd say I'm not thrilled with the idea. I think we should actually go the full hundred and eighty days. So why did we, so we had one day that we lost, we didn't have heat, and then, so two days in the high school and one day in the middle school.
Correct.
All right. I think it's ultimately the wrong message. I would try and go a hundred and eighty days. Hope anybody else has any other thoughts?
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
I think one day at the end of the summer is gonna, I'm confident that we'll be able to get a hundred and eighty days worth of teaching in there, and a hundred and seventy-one days. I think we're waiting.
Diane, so?
They finally agreed with us. We might as well take it.
Who, Riot finally agreed with us?
It doesn't happen much, though.
Come on, Jerry.
Not too interested in being in the group that Riot agrees with. Diane, any comments?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Stand on my laurels or whatever. All right. Announcement scheduled meeting reports. So I have not yet, so as you recall, Mr. Karen, on behalf of the Budget Committee, requested a day to meet with us on a Thursday. One of the days I am out of town, one of the days is Valentine's Day. I won't mention who brought that up. And I think the other day was the seventh? Does anybody have, I can't get into my email.
It is. It was. Three weeks in a row, thirty-first, seventh, and fourteenth, you throw out there.
So that would be the only day we could really do that they had proposed. I mean, we could ask them for another day, but the seventh is okay with me.
Can I ask a question? Normally, and I'm trying to think back, and for whatever reason it's escaping me, do we usually go when we are still in process of discussing line items?
It does seem early, but we usually start discussing our budget in December.
I'm just fearful that we're not gonna be as close to the finish line as we need to be.
Well, we'll meet on the twenty-second. Yeah.
I...
And then...
I mean, we really did just
The twelfth.
glance over this tonight. We didn't get into any detail.
We could go the fourteenth.
We could go the twenty-first.
We could go the fourteenth.
You're lucky you're not my husband.
There's, there's no room for love in a budget, Diane. She won't watch. Believe me, she won't watch. All right. I can barely watch. So, yeah, I can ask them for the twenty-first? Twenty-first, okay? It's only one week later than the... Meeting with the Budget Committee. They meet on Thursdays. Okay. I'll ask them for the twenty-first, and then...
They're gonna meet on a holiday? That's Martin Luther King or King.
No, they meet on Thursdays.
Oh.
No, the twenty-first is February.
Oh.
They meet on Thursdays in general, I think.
I mean, our final budget isn't due till March sixteenth, and I just doing it a month plus before that, it doesn't tell...
Twenty-first's getting pretty close to the sixteenth, though. All right, I'll see what they say about the twenty-first.
Okay.
Okay. Same, along same lines, they had requested some dates to tour the schools on Saturdays, and they were specifically interested in, well, you guys, well, actually not all of you were there, but most of you were there. It was just last night. It seems like a thousand years ago. They wanted to see places where we wanted to think about doing more work. That was Mr. Susan in particular's interest. And I don't have the dates down there either. Did you write them down? Yeah, it was in the email. It was in the email I forwarded to everybody. 'Cause it was just organizational. Do you remember? The dates of the Saturdays that they wanted.
The Saturdays.
Yeah.
I don't recall them. I have the, see if I can find the email.
All right. Why don't we just say, everybody respond to my email that I did send to you about the dates on Saturdays that they wanted to...
He had suggested January nineteenth, twenty-sixth, February second, or February ninth. Four Saturdays in a row they gave us to choose from.
Okay. Any of those good, bad, and different? I can't be there on the second, but other than that, as far as I know. Deb, Elaine, Sally, what are you doing with your Saturdays?
Saturdays, okay. You can't do second. What's the next date? February ninth, do second, February you?
The ninth, yeah. That'll be right before. All right, so I'll say February ninth? All right.
Send an email so that I can...
Yep. And I think it sort of would fall under this as well. Should we have a designated person attend their meetings? So I'm talking about meetings? Sally would be there? Perfect. I can't think of anybody better for the job. Perfect, I can't think of anybody better for the job. Okay, great. That was it?
Is it Kevin?
Um, any other announcements, scheduled meetings, reports?
Um, I just wanted to validate if we were gonna have our finance subcommittee meeting on the fifteenth at six PM. I know I have received a response back from Diane and Peter, I wasn't sure if Deb was gonna be available.
Uh, why don't you guys go ahead? I don't have to be there, if I can.
All right.
Um, I have one last item. Dr. Sanchioli, should we go back into executive? We did not take up the issue, uh, under C of, uh, teacher?
Teacher, um...
Oh. You can do that.
Yeah, we, we, I would suggest we need a decision before next...
Yeah, we should do that. All right, any other, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to enter executive session under Rhode Island General Law, forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, two, uh, Health and Physical Education Teacher.
It's five A one. Second?
Five, what, oh, five A one, all right.
Thanks, guys.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.